This regular session meeting, uh, February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Going to call for a moment of silent prayer. Amen.
Amen.
Y'all want to do the pleas of allegiance?
I don't flag it.
Pledge allegiance.
To the land, announced in America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, first thing we need to do is approve the agenda. Anybody got any changes that need to be made or additions?
Mr. Craig, I need to add something down there on the, when we get to the sheriff's lawsuits, the lawyers called me. We need to, I have to make a motion, you know, as ACCG lead counsel, um, to be able to accept the acknowledgement of services. So instead of all you guys getting served for that, he'll, he'll be just on the serve.
All right.
So that'll be that on the price.
Okay. All right. With that change or that addition, if that's it, if that's all, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
A second.
All in favor. All right, the minutes, did they, any mistakes in that or corrections? It looked like it was all right.
I didn't see any. I say we approve the motion to approve the minutes.
You got two, you got a regular session and a special session. We can approve them both at the same time.
I, I make a motion to approve both special session and regular session.
Second on that.
My second.
All right, I'm gonna vote in favor of it also, so the motion secured. The financials, the accounts payable, any question on that?
You want a motion to approve that?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the accounts payable.
My second.
I'm gonna vote in favor of it also, and the financial report.
I make a motion to approve the financial report.
My second.
I'm gonna vote in favor of it also. All right, on the appearances, we got Mandy rolling for the May, uh, May Hall Festival.
Yes, sir. Um, I just wanted to formally get permission to have the May Hall Festival on the square. Because, uh, we'll be, people will be using the lawn and stuff like that, as picnics, whatever. Um, I do not think we will be using the steps for entertainment. I think we're gonna go a different route there. Um, I never did get with an electrician to see about possibly fixing some of those outlets. So we're just gonna use another generator again for the outlets and power for the electricity. Um, we are throwing in a new event that's, uh, well, it's not new, but we're regenerating a, um, previous, the May Hall five, the bike ride. We usually have it at the school, starting from the school and from the school. A lot of the riders have decided that they would like to be downtown, so we could focus on our businesses. They can shop, they can eat. Um, so we're gonna have like a little mini festival, more like a jamboree is what we're calling it. We will have entertainment. Um, there's a couple of other things that we're gonna be bringing in. But we're also looking for, um, working with the city to get the permits that we need in order to expand what we're kinda looking for. Um, but then, um, other than that, that's it. I just really wanted, I wanted the permission formally to use the.
Did you think it went really well last year?
Oh, it was phenomenal. The businesses did. I'm sorry.
He's all right. He's all right.
He's all right. But it seemed like I thought it went.
It, the business.
I went, I mean, I seemed like it went well.
There was a couple of businesses that came to me and showed me their, um, annual, what do you call it? Not their profits, but their sales for the last three May Halls when it was down here. And it quadrupled, going back on the square. So that was a lot of foot traffic that not only shopped at the festival itself, but went into the restaurants to dine and shop and stuff too. Um, we're really trying to focus on our murals and the agritourism and stuff with the bike ride. So it'll go through, uh, different communities. But, um, downtown Coquelin, all our murals is one of the base subjects for that ride. Um, that's pretty much it with the May Hall Festival. I do have other couple of things that I would just like to mention. Um, I wanna brag for a moment on our road department. I've already called Mr. Andy and I have specifically said the, the job that this guy is doing on our dirt roads. And I know it's not just my dirt road. I've seen it on other dirt roads too. But I really wanted to praise them and, and I made sure that Mr. Andy knew who I was talking to personally. Um, that they're doing a great job. And, um, I know Doug had texted me, um, earlier today. I do serve on the rec board that y'all had appointed me, and I will start, I'm the secretary treasurer. So I'll start sending over the minutes from our meetings too. Thank y'all.
All right, we appreciate all that. Is, uh, everybody okay with the May Hall Festival back on the square?
Absolutely.
We, let's just vote and call for a motion to, to do that again this year.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Uh, I'm gonna vote in favor of it also.
You gonna get us up a list of stuff you might need beforehand?
I'll walk around. There was a good bit that was already done last year. I mean, it's just those, those minor details, you know, of, of things that, you know, can't happen overnight, you know, sidewalks and stuff like that. But that's no big deal. It'll manage.
Uh, we appreciate it. Uh, Brad, you wanna talk to us about the resurfacing the tennis courts and all?
Yes, sir. Well, can I talk about the parking lot first?
Yeah.
This is a open contract that City, City, uh, at least on top of it.
Yeah.
Seventeen thousand seven twenty-four is everything from the front gate here all the way down to the oval and everything, fix the potholes.
Is this pictured?
Uh, yeah, that, I just made that picture there for y'all just to kinda see.
So that's from up here?
Yeah, right, yeah, yeah, right here, right, right here.
Yeah.
Right here, all the way down, get this parking lot here, it's gonna fix all the potholes, make it smooth, go down to the oval, hit the oval and come back.
So everything from the gate coming in?
Right. Now, that's the seventeen thousand seven hundred twenty-four dollars, okay? Now, the other one is the parking lot that's up there by City Hall. And me and Doug checked on that, and we do own the parking lot. So what we, what.
It's kinda half.
Well, that's why it's half and half, that's right.
City owns half and then we own half.
It's half and half.
On this far side.
So that parking lot needs it too. It's, 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 uh, it's not as bad a shape as this, but it needs it too. So I talked to Cory at City Hall, and he was agreeing to pay half.
That's the parking lot for the park and the chair, the police department and everything right there.
Agreed to pay half. So that total for us is gonna come up to be around twenty thousand dollars. Um, I, honestly, I think it's, it, it really needs.
So he's gonna pay half of this one, the six thousand?
I think it really needs it. I think it'd be, um, really make that part look better. And, 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 and I don't think any of y'all's went down to the oval down there, that section right there where you go in the water treatment plant and everything.
It's terrible, yeah.
It's, it's really, it's really bad. And I, I think, I think, I think the park deserves it.
All right, um, were y'all gonna talk about this at y'all's rec meetings? Or, or you just?
Or you talking about the same, for the parking lot?
The paving.
We've talked about it.
We were, they, 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 you know, we, they, they.
We told, we told Brad to get up the proposition to show, to bring here.
Everybody's agreeable?
Yes.
All right. All right, um.
Now, and also too, to check the state on splash. T-splash, T-splash, I'm sorry. T-splash, and, um, you know, we got enough in there to, to, to take care of that.
I talked to Perry and he said parking lots would fall under that, so if we wanted to use some kind of T-splash. Because we don't have enough in regular rec splash to.
You got a list of anything else you gonna want down there this year?
Oh, yeah, there's. A lot of things we need in there.
Do you really want that list, man?
Well, I'm used, I'm used to people saying what they, what they want, and then they'll hit you with what they need kinda deal, you know?
You know, really, there are various stuff that we need, with the light needs to be worked on, some in the bathroom. I think we can just stage that and, you know, to squash and fill it back up.
Yeah, okay.
Kinda goes, and there's kinda taking this.
Nothing major though, what you're saying. Nothing major though, that you can make up.
I mean, really, honestly, the, the, the lights is gonna be a major thing soon.
Right.
Yeah. Uh, matter of fact, three nights has come in and it's gonna look at the lights and see. And I know one of them said something about there's bugs, might not be able to use it on, we may go LED lights. But then I also heard LED lights weren't expensive, as expensive, if, if we already got the poles up and everything too. So that, that would, that would help out. But me, the, the parking lots would be number one, the lights be number two, and then the bathrooms be number three.
Gotcha. All right, Doug, getting back to the splash. What, uh, what was Faith saying a while ago?
Can use T-splash for paving the parking lot.
Well, I think we're gonna need all that for the Bayou Road.
Yeah, and that, we just don't have enough in rec splash to get the tractor for the golf course and all the other, the paving.
Did you ever hear anything out of Winston about the truck?
Yeah, he'll be getting it this, uh, spring. He, he's got a quote, it's about the same price. It went up a little bit, but, um, he had said when we, we initially presented it, it was, it was for early springs. That's what he's, he's shooting for. He said within the next two weeks or so.
All right, you gonna look into it, see if we find the money and then?
Well, can I?
We already got.
Mr. Craig.
Yeah.
Now, in splash, we have sixty-five thousand dollars.
Right at that.
Right, right at that. Okay, well, Winston takes some of our route, you know, we're still, we're still at forty-one. Now, we're not gonna get to do all those projects, but we still, we still would be, you know, we still have plenty of money to do this and still have at least twenty thousand left over.
All right, we got a thing here pending. A lot of schools, uh, Mike would pay for half of doing the tennis courts.
I haven't heard anything back from superintendent.
Leroy, you know anything about that?
I don't think you're gonna have a vote, I don't think I'm, which is, but, uh, I don't, I don't think you're gonna have a vote to do that.
All right, um, y'all, did these folks say anything about when they could do this paving?
He, uh, uh, he told me that it had to be a, he had to have a fifty degrees for a certain period of time for the, you know, getting asphalt from Bainbridge or Dethan or where, but he didn't know when he was gonna get, get that from. So he said, I asked him, I said, could you have this done before ball season? And he said, if you, if I could keep me fifty degrees and above for a certain period of time, yes.
Ball season start.
I'd be the week after, pre, pre basis would be like first week in April. So that's, that's what I'm gunning for.
It'll be, yeah, above that.
Yeah, in March sometime. How long is that? They can do it? Couple of days, I guess? It won't take long?
About a week.
About a week?
Now, we're gonna, he asked, well, if, if you see that thing, and we got to remove the grass and stuff that grew up in, in, in the thing.
Yeah.
Are, are they gonna come in there and, and mule this off or anything? Or you don't know?
Mr. Craig, I don't, I don't know that. I don't, I don't know that, that work. Now, Cory Thomas is the one put me on him because he did, this guy did their church out there, and I rode out there to look at their church parking lot and everything. It looked really good. And, and, and there's not a lot of these people do this out here. I, I called one guy from Arianna, he came up and checked it all out and never returned my call.
Did you check with Mike Floyd and them down there?
I didn't, Mr. Craig. I didn't.
Yeah, you need to, cause that's just right down the road down there too. Y'all gonna put this on hold?
Yeah, let's get one more price on it, just to make sure.
All right. Get the tennis courts on here too. You gonna go into anything else on that?
What I can tell you about the tennis courts was I called a guy recommended by K-Roe of the rec department, and he done all their stuff. And he's been, he's been highly recommended. And I, and also was going through the three B, and I got another guy that's supposed to come down and look and give you an idea on it. The third one, I, I think it's, like I said, it's not a lot of people do this. This guy's from Actworth, I believe, and he's gonna work his way down and do it when he gets down here. He's not gonna make a special trip to that and, you know, give free estimate for it. Anyway, um, this guy did Google, checked it all out, and he said he would give me a, a rough estimate of twelve thousand dollars to resurface and repaint them, the whole nine yards per court. So that would be twenty-four thousand dollars.
Okay.
And, um, he would come down and give us a finish estimate to make, to make sure that he can, we can tell it'd be twenty-four thousand dollars. Now, there's an upgrade on that, where they come in and put a line of, 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 kind of a mesh mat or something on it and paint it on. It's supposed to be, you know, a lot longer, last longer, it's forty-eight thousand dollars.
Wow.
So if I wanna understand, the meeting me and Doug have with the superintendent Cory and all, we talked about, they talked about maybe putting some tennis courts out at school in the next three to five years. So I said that was four. So what I'm asking, what I'm saying is we could use, do the twenty-four thousand dollars for those two if y'all wanted to. And that gets us to that four years, you know, because I'm gonna tell you something. If you get six courts out of school, the kid, they can come down from high school, come down here and play. They have plenty of room down there and then all, so. And there's, there's not, you know, me being out there for the last two years, matter of fact, this month's my two-year anniversary, but, um, not a lot of people play tennis.
You talking about other than the school?
Other than the school.
I think it's more utilized for skateboarding than roller skating. It's not good for the court surface either.
Yeah. I like it. I try to keep that running if I can. But, uh, it's not, it's just not a big thing, cause here's why. You, you have tennis from January to, 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 uh, March, into March. We need to have baseball season. Well, then by that time you get out of school, then it's hot. Your kids are staying, I mean, get out there, it's hot. So you got all summer, you know, I have a few people struggling and everything, but it's really not a tennis rate ball season that you can have. So then you got football coming up then, and then you gotta, you know.
But, but the kids, I mean, until the school can build some, they're gonna have to have somewhere to play.
Yeah.
And so you were talking about, you didn't think we would get the votes on the tennis courts to help out with the tennis courts? Is that what you're talking about?
Uh, he looking into that, but, uh, I don't, I don't, I don't see that gonna pass, uh.
Y'all gonna build some out there at the school?
But we gotta, we've gotta be able to get those kids by until, you know, the three to five years. I mean, what are they gonna do in, you know, that amount of time?
I know that the, the cracks that are in the courts right now, they will throw the balls and you'll lose a point. I mean, it's, it's really that simple.
When's the last time they were redone? Long time?
I have some pictures in there, I found and, and things, and these have never been redone. But they were, that one was built, I wanna say in, maybe ninety-four? I, I'm not, I'm not home, sure around ninety-four. No, and then down there, I, I don't have, didn't find anything out, but it's, I'm sure it is.
It's built quite a bit afterwards. I remember when they built it.
Sure. All right, if y'all wanna put this on hold till we get another price on the paving, then we're looking to do the resurfacing of the courts too. Is that real? Do that? All right, anything else you can go over with the prayer? All right, appreciate it. Um, on the old business, the commissioners, the office move, is anything?
No, it's complete.
Okay. Y'all, every, all the computer stuff like it needs to be?
It is. And I also called Jill Brown and let her know everything, and they, she said they would go ahead and start processing the paperwork.
Okay. All right, fueling station?
It's complete as well. We've got one department. I think Andy's got his cars that we've gotta get him. Um, we've got the sheriff, we've got the EMS, uh, pretty much all the county departments other than that. I think your, you, you and Shelley are using it, right? So, so all the departments are using it.
Some, you know, along.
We had, had any issues, there, there's a little, little punch list that we've got to, uh, get to the company, but now it's, it's running flawless right now.
Okay. What y'all, what y'all receiving up there in the office? Is it, is it where you can print it so we could take a look at it?
It is, uh, it is. What, what we get is, we, we can set it to, to check it daily. We can set it to check it hourly. And every transaction that's put on that pump is actually sent Wi-Fi to us. So we, uh, we have it set up like a customer base. So every department is its own customer, and it records every transaction. So we have, we have fuel, the gallons, we have the amount, everything that's needed.
Okay. The, uh, next month, just, uh, to, uh, we can get a, an overview of what's going on.
Okay.
If you don't mind.
You want like gallons, gallons, uh?
Yeah.
Run through?
Yeah. All right, um, the ordinance for the road, we talked about that right there?
Um, I'm waiting. I've, I've been talking with ACCG, Bill Timmy, and there, there's really no county that has a specific dirt road ordinance. So what he's trying to do is find the best one that'll suit us. He, he's got a few counties that has like road ordinances, but not like just, I mean, we'd have to adopt pretty much every bit of that. Um, I, I was gonna think about talking to Bill Mills, our attorney, and just seeing if he could come up with something that, that he would be able to write. If you guys adopted it, it would be an offense. But I was gonna give Bill Timmy, you know, let him go ahead and finish up his stuff. So that's still in progress.
Okay. Have we got any questions on that? All right, we'll just, just follow up on all that right there. We may just have to come up with, but if you don't hear nothing out of him next week or so, come up with something, it's like a rough draft and hand it off to Bill Mills.
Okay.
I mean, we pretty much, we talked about what we needed to do. So it's just, they can't just go out there and start digging, piling dirt up in the road and stuff like that. So anyway, we'll put it together if he don't come up with something. See what he says. The, uh, GPS on the county vehicles?
We have, um, we've met with some folks, um, some of it's kinda high priced. The city actually has gone, and I think, how many vehicles they put on?
Said like.
Five or six or so.
Yeah, they're not.
And, um, it's like nineteen dollars a month per unit. So we're trying to find actually cheaper ones. There's a bunch of companies out there, but we do have a meeting scheduled with that company that the city's using, just to see if it's worth our while.
What are they using?
Uh, he, I, he told me the name.
He didn't tell me, yeah, something like that.
So if, if we all, I mean, maybe just go in us together, you know, two entities, we may get a better deal. He said the more we buy, the cheaper it would be. So that's what we're just, we're just waiting to get that webinar set up. COVID is kinda, you know, stalled everything. But we are, it is in progress still.
Well, there's a, and I looked this up yesterday. There's a, and it may be some dime store thing. It, it didn't, I couldn't get into no real details. They wanted you to talk to some representative, and I wasn't getting, doing that. But anyway, the thing, according to how many times it sends you information, if it was twice a week or once a day or whatever, it's according to how long the unit, the battery would last on the unit itself. It ain't even wired into the vehicle. It's just connected to it, and the battery itself pinged off the satellite. Then it sent it to some app that you could download. And if you didn't do it but once a day, to tell you where that vehicle was at a certain time of the day or whatever like that, right there, the battery would last, it said from two to five years. So if it, if it was updating constantly, it won't last that long.
If you give us that name, we'll reach out and handle it.
I will. Um, all right. The, uh, USDA, the grant for the road department?
Um, so I've got all the paperwork complete. Um, I just have to get some financials. But me in favor is talking, uh, Mr. Allen had asked us to kinda go over and see what was in, in Andy's splash. And with the, with the three motor graders and the excavator and the Kubota, the monthly amounts about tapped out. Uh, i- if we do it, I'd suggested that we go with the, the highest tractor, what was the bigger one, the sixty, sixty something? Go with that one in a. Go with that one and a mower, um, because what it is, is a USDA grant. If we get to, to a hundred thousand dollars, they'll give us fifty thousand on that hundred. We get to a hundred and fifty thousand, we just, we're not gonna get any but that fifty thousand. So if we can start out, get one tractor and one mower, um, we, we may can, um, if you read down here, we may can take it out of the T spots, because it is equipment used for the infrastructure for roads and stuff. I mean, I don't, I don't know how much he's got in spots, but we can't, we can't take one of the Davids out of spots.
Well, she's got some built up, but right now you got about as much coming out each month.
It's like twelve coming out, twelve going in, so.
And that's without the dump truck and the truck that the payment hadn't come due on yet, so we gotta figure out how to do that next.
So I can proceed if you want, and then just maybe just find out to take a lump sum, because the, the worst case is we just have to pay fifty thousand out lump sum, and that's still a good deal for a tractor and a mower.
Y'all wanna go on and continue with that? Because it's, when, when would we be, if we decided to do it, when would we do it?
Um, well, I mean, the paperwork, we could submit it. There's really no guideline. It's just, it's constantly open. It's just toward the end of the year, the money kinda runs out. They just kinda wait till the first year's started, so it's ready to go now. You know, when you sign that paper, finds that, she said just whenever we wanted to do it, so. Um, I'll continue, and then I think Faye's gotta get a couple of financials. We gotta get a letter from the attorney, and then we're ready to file.
And it will, how, mower wise, what you got running down there?
The, the double bat wing that we got is, is still in decent shape. I mean, you know, we, we kinda continue to make it run. The other one is thirteen, fourteen years old, you know, it's, it's on its last leg, that one is, I mean.
I, I, right off the top of my head, I don't remember. The mower that we, that we wanting to do with the grant, is it a double or single?
It's a double. It, it seems to work better than the single one, because you get off the highway a little bit. That other one, you have to run basically with your wheel up on the highway. This one, you get off a little and it flexes a little. It, it's held up a lot better than the other ones did, and I was hoping to make two runs. You know, put both, put both back knees together. Most roads, we can make a run down one side, a run back down the other, and you basically, every now and then my kids, once you had left every other time or something, but if it was in a tight, you could make two runs, you know, run that, you know, run both of them down one side, come back up the other, you do with the road. Where when you run that little bat wing with the other one, it leaves a pretty good bit from there to the fence. You have to turn around and come back and get it. But the one we got, I don't remember when we bought it, but, uh, it's, it's held up real good. It's in, it's in real, it's in fairly decent shape, that one is. Main thing is the old, the old tractor is the worst part, and that one mower, but that one tractor and one mower would be a great hit.
Y'all want him to go on forward with the thing? I mean, you ain't, when it, all these, you ain't got, you ain't committed to do it. If we don't sign the papers, you ain't.
We just moving forward with the loan paperwork. I say, gonna make a motion for that? We need to make a motion on that?
Yeah, I would.
Need a motion to move forward with the loan application?
Yeah.
I'll second it.
All right, I'm gonna vote in favor of it all, so if something comes up, I mean, we look, we look like we can.
We can keep an eye on that, the amounts that's in that.
Okay. All right, the, uh, the road department, the work plan?
Is there anything else Andy, I hadn't talked to him?
Um, was there, was there anything?
Was there anything added that you would do to buy that work plan? Okay, it's still in progress.
We, you know, we run the weekend, you know, we trying to watch that, and, you know, we run. It was one of them weeks when it was wet, you know, we trying to work with, you know, what y'all want, I mean, I.
It must be working, because you had one lady over here that said y'all was doing a good job, so. I don't hear that, I don't hear that much. Don't take that the wrong way, but I don't hear that much now.
I, I hate to leave you, I don't either. But, um, guys are working on a lot of spots out there, you know, we, we got a lot of wet spots.
How many miles of dirt road you got in Miller County?
We got almost three hundred.
Three hundred.
Which has scraping roads, I see scraping roads, limb cutting, that's six hundred miles. That's, that's more than most counties have.
Yeah.
All right, and then they added their, uh, work detail. I just put that right behind that, so you can see what, where they're, where they're at and what kinda work they've been doing.
Okay. Well, if you, if you can work it out where you rotate them around, so there's somebody working on Friday like that right there, if they wanna do that. And, and on a volunteer basis, I'd.
I didn't have no problem, you know, I mean, really, I didn't have no problem. I mean, it's been raining, it's gonna rain this weekend, so.
Well, as long as they ain't, they ain't running up no bunch of overtime or something like that right there. If they wanna knock off, if it's wet Monday and they wanna start Tuesday and work on, see, see if it'll, if you can just make a transition into that.
I think we can work out what y'all want, you know, and keep in budget and, you know, we'll keep an eye on it. If there's a problem, we'll work out something new.
All right, the, the fellow that was, got a letter here the other day. The fellow that was an engineer that I reckon y'all might have been dealing with. His name was, uh, Fan Mason. You know him?
I do, I do.
Anyway, he's, he's not, he's retired, and the new, the new fellow for us is gonna be Scott Chambers. So anyway, I'm gonna leave the letter here in the office. Got a phone number and stuff down there. But anyway, he sent the letter saying he was taking over that fellow's spot for the DOT, so he's the engineer.
We might deal with somebody under him, and then all our paperwork goes to him sometime. That's how it works. We actually be talking to one guy, but we turn something in from y'all, it goes to somebody a little higher ups, and that may be somebody swapping positions.
Okay.
And this is Craig, if I can add this, um, Andy and them actually ran an ad in the paper for the Bellevue pavement.
Right.
And I do have the bid, uh, bids listed on our website. I've been reaching out to different companies, just letting them know, hey, if you're interested, go here to this address. Um, I think we're gonna close it out the twenty-fifth of February and just see what we get.
All right. Anybody got any more questions about any roads to? Okay, no. All right, we're gonna get on to the new business, the comprehensive plan on February seventeenth, RDC over there, regional development. They, uh, will sit down on, at three o'clock on seventeenth and go through this plan, which we done done it several times in the past years. But anyway, that's, that's, what day's the seventeenth on?
Uh, I think it's Thursday. And, and it's, it's pretty much, I've got it listed down here, the, the chairman, the county manager, the city manager, and the mayor. If you guys are interested in coming, just, just let us know, because you know there's three of y'all on the meeting, we have to, we have to advertise. So just let us know ahead of time if you want to.
All right. The, uh, the next thing is approval for driveway and pipe for the fire station in the county. Did, uh, we voted on that the last time?
Uh, no, what you did was, that was the telephone, when I reached out to you guys on telephone and text, all five of you approved it, but Ms. Christine wanted it brought to the, the meeting, so we can do a formal approval. Um, Andy and them has done the work. I went out there and looked at it. It looks real good, so it's been complete.
All right, we need to, we need a motion to approve what we agreed on, so it'd be on the record on the telephone?
So moved.
The second.
Second.
All right, I'm gonna vote in favor of it all, so. The, uh, the next thing is the sheriff department lawsuits. You got that, it's page twenty-nine through page sixty-seven. You got Rosenberg and Price, and there's actually another one that came in here.
It is. That's, that's the one that we, we keep receiving the same letter, but we haven't got anything other than that letter. Um, that's the one that I presented to you guys where all the spelling, like the sheriff, everything's misspelled, and it's just, something's not right, but, but our attorney hasn't heard anything else from them. But they keep sending that same letter over and over to, to us, and, um, ACCG's aware of it.
Had, so they ain't formally filed nothing except with the lawyer?
No.
No. Is there anything we need to discuss about this?
This, this is where we need to do the, uh, to make the motion for Raleigh Rollins, the, um, ACCG council to be able to accept acknowledgement services, so, so they don't have to serve everybody, they just deserve the county as a whole that he represents.
I need a motion to, uh, let ACCG appoint. Is it gonna be him or is it just gonna be council?
Uh, Raleigh Rollins, so it would be out there.
Appoint Raleigh Rollins through ACCG to represent us in this lawsuit?
So moved.
Second.
All right, I'm gonna vote in favor of it all, so. Is there anything else we need to talk about about that?
That's what I said.
All right, health department appointment, uh, what's that lady's name?
Uh, Courtney Clanton.
She's unable to attend and be on that, uh, is it the board?
It is. It's the, it's the, uh, health board for the county, for the health department.
The, the Covid stuff, and first one thing and another, got her wrapped up. What do we need to do? Who?
Um.
Have you reached out to anybody?
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, it's, it's hard, because all the nurses are saying the same thing, hey, you know, I've got Covid, you know, dealing with that, so, but it has to be, um, a nurse or nurse practitioner or PA, but it, it's just hard finding them, so. Yeah, I think about that, but, but I'll, I'll reach out to, to a couple more and just see.
What about?
I may reach out to Robin and, and, and she may appoint somebody.
If you wanna talk to her, I, the hospital meeting, I think, is next week. Uh, I can talk to them too.
Okay.
If you wanna go ahead.
You might motivate somebody.
Yeah, I, 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 I'm on there as the county representative, so, I mean, we do still have representation. It's just we've been in that position short for a while.
All right, go ahead and call her if you don't mind.
Okay.
And, uh, where's, if she says I'll be hunting somebody, I'll check on it at the next hospital meeting, see if there's somebody available. All right, the scraping the dirt road in the city. Um, that's, it, the city's request, they're gonna let us know when they want it scraped, or they want it scraped on a regular?
Um, they didn't say. They just said once y'all talked about it, they would get with Andy. Andy, you, you said you scraped a few of them.
We scraped them, um, we did miss a time or two, because Horace kinda did that on, he, he looked after it and I didn't think about it, you know, and Horace got hurt, and we, we've caught back up. We worked on one of them today. I mean, we, we kinda getting back to where, when they come and they go, and they, they catching them. We, we'll, we'll keep them straight.
He said there's four of them, so you got the four. The, the fifth one, I guess Holly is being paved.
Yeah, we, we worked on Holly today. It's been a, it, it's been a mess.
Where, where is it at?
Right past the road department. That little road goes kinda right down the W C.
Yeah, on the other side of W C.
They got the barrels in the columns there. We, we, we got it better shape today. It dried out enough to work on it. We worked on it, but we, we got that. We, it, Horace just kinda looked after that when he was coming and going, and he caught those roads, but he got seen left, and I just, I dropped the ball on thinking about it, but we, we done scraped them a time or two since they wanted them straight.
Did y'all do all the work down there on that road?
Holly Drive?
Yeah.
No, Oxford was, Oxford's doing that work. We just, um.
Y'all just maintaining it?
Well, we just trying to help them get it where they can drive back on it. They just done so much work to it, and it's wet anyway, and the people that live there just can't, can't go and go, so we've been, we've just been helping them out a little, not, we're not doing work.
Okay. All right, you got that handled. That's, that's fine. The, uh, intergovernmental agreement for the, with the city, for the trash, the roll off the dumpsters, little issue this past weekend. Folks didn't come dump the things, which, uh, why did the man, I mean, when he left, he's there Tuesdays and Thursdays, ain't he?
We, we went and packed them, Craig. We, we tried to make it go, but at two o'clock Saturday, we, we packed the dumpsters.
He was open, he was open Saturday.
I know, but why, if they was getting that full, why didn't he let somebody know, or did he?
Yeah, we did, but they, they, they just, they didn't dump them all Monday either.
All right.
And, and we went and packed them. We tried to make, we made every effort to try to make all day Saturday, but it, it was just everything, we had to clean it up today. I mean, it was just falling off on the ground, and I told him, you know, I mean.
Long story short, the company didn't come and dump them like they were supposed to.
Yeah, well, the, the contract ran out yesterday, and when we, we and the lady talked, she, she never, she just said, that's fine. When the contract ends, we'll come out there Monday and get them. She didn't say we weren't gonna continue to dump like we were supposed to. So technically, they didn't even fulfill their last week of the contract.
Right.
But, so, so anyway, today, um, I think we've got them all moved. The city's made their place.
We ready to open up in the morning. We ready. We got it ready today.
And we're fine. I, I talked to Cory, and he basically said if that stuff wouldn't happen, if I needed to call him at any hour to call him, and then he would make sure it gets taken care of.
All right.
We, we tried to make it, but I mean, it just got where they was, trash was just falling off on the ground, and I mean, we closed about two o'clock Saturday.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna email that company and let them know.
I know, I know they let their check go as long as it could.
Yeah, that's right.
All right. The agreement, is it ready to sign?
Yes, that's, that's, it's ready to sign.
Need a motion to sign it?
I need a motion to give me permission to sign this agreement with the city for them to take over the trash business?
So moved.
I'll second.
I'm gonna vote in favor of it all, so. All right, any more discussion about anything with, with the trash or anything? All right, the regional commission, the, uh, appointment, Jamie Smith, joint city and county. So she's appointed by the, I reckon the city and the county, don't you?
Yes.
All right, her term is expired or going to expire, and I reckon she's willing to, to serve again on this.
Yes.
Y'all wanna reappoint her?
Yeah, she'll do it.
I need a motion.
I make a motion. Jamie does it.
No.
I'll second it.
All right, I vote in favor of it all, so. The, uh, arts council, the funding agreement. Kristin come talk to us about that right there, and, uh, she was wanting to go ahead and start on that, uh, remodeling project up there that we told her she'd find the matching funds that we helped fund that, uh. Did she come up with a, she got a, a, uh, contract with the people or any kind of?
She said she would bring me. They're fixing to start construction. They agreed on, on the, the price and the company. Um, love, Mr. Lover, Keith Lover, Kevin Lover?
Kevin Lover.
He's gonna do the work, so she said she would give whatever, whatever you guys requested. Um, she says she's willing to sign the agreement too. She wanted to, you know, just, I was gonna, you look at it first, and if that's what it, if that's what the word that you wanted, then you sign it. She said she would sign it.
Yeah, I like seeing the paperwork.
Yeah. All right, uh, so we need, you, you want us to read it and make sure it's like it needs to be?
That's right, unless, unless you wanna add something else to it, you know?
Do we need to do that tonight, or?
That's up to you. I mean, it's.
How long, how, how, how long, lengthy is it?
She, she says she's needing the money. I mean, they're, they're fixing to start, so I don't know.
Y'all wanna go ahead and do this, and if, if there's any?
Contingent on looking at the paperwork?
Unless there's any problem with the agreement, then go ahead and start this.
Yeah, let's do it, yeah.
I need a motion.
Motion to do what?
To, uh, sign the agreement with the arts council for the funding.
Contingent on the paperwork, right?
The words right.
I second it.
All right, I'll vote in favor of it all, so. The, uh, next thing is the Grimsley Bridge road damage.
Mr. Allen had called me, um, he, he hurt his hip today, so he wasn't gonna be able to make it. Um, but he had me go out, and, uh, if you look at the pictures, uh, out on Grimsley Bridge Road, there's, uh, it looks like a farmer's, um, dragging the road. Where did I get that? And it looks like the, the last, I guess, several different pictures. And he just wanted to bring that up, just to basically stress that we do need that, that county ordinance for, uh, you see, like?
Yeah.
And that last, the, the very last one looks like it's more of a, I mean, that, that tells the story of it all. The rest of it looks like it could be where they, they're just using as a road to drive in.
Looks like they done, took a dirt pan to drain water.
Yeah.
Or redirect the water or something.
They wanted me to present that.
Looks like, it looks like it was running down the side of the field, and they, they did it where it was running into the road and run down the, like, the channel of the road, that's what it looks like to me.
Was there an existing ditch, or did he say?
Well, I can't really tell. I went out there and looked at it. I mean, Andy.
Think I know where that is. You know where that is, Andy?
When you look at that and see, there's, there's like.
There's a cover pipe, there's a cover pipe right, right. They trying to get into that cover pipe, ain't that what he's trying to do?
Yeah, I, I, I do know where that is.
I do too. I, I think I know where he is.
Is there a ditch here? An existing ditch?
I can't remember. Andy may can remember.
Is there a ditch there, Andy?
There, it, it is a natural flow of the, there's a natural flow of the world on one side of the road, but it. There, it, it is a natural flow of, there's a natural flow of the water on one side of the road, but it, that water is gonna be made to go, try to go there.
He trying to get it to a culvert, did Andy and them put in about a year or two ago?
They had, the, the road goes to a bottom right there, and, and the road water.
Yeah, so the water, so the water would stand there. He put it, he put it in where the water wouldn't stand right there, and the water would get on into the field, and whoever did this is trying to get out their field to run down to that culvert, to go up under the road.
If the ditch is deep enough, water will go anywhere you want. That, you are right, Lincoln, that.
I think that's right, I think that's right.
It, it's gonna, their water's fixing to become our problem, and we gonna have to try to carry further on down.
Ain't that, there's a house right there, and it, it's getting by that, they trying to keep it going by that house right there, so don't go running the yard of that house, maybe, I don't know, Andy.
It, it's just an old problem, I mean, we just deal with it, I mean, that, that, that right there is happening all over county also, I mean.
Well, if it's gonna keep it out of somebody's house, I ain't got no problem with it, but if it's gonna.
Well, I mean, after a while, you dumping, laying a lot of water in the road, now, I mean.
When it rains, there's not much water right there, it kept running down that road, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, clipping the, clipping the bank line and draining fields into the road is, is something that you gonna eventually have to look at. The road's not a, not a drainage, you know, I mean, you make water get out of your field by cutting the.
Yeah, but the NRC has down there, and you ain't supposed to dig no ditch, and, and, and if there was an existing ditch, one of them, what they call the WPA ditch, from a long time ago, from back in the thirties or whatever, if there was an existing ditch here.
This is, this is not that.
No, it's, it's just, it's just I can clip the bank and dump five acres of water into the road, I mean, that's basically what it is, right? I, I've set in, named twenty-five places in the last year that's been cut, and it's just pouring water into the road. They just fire right up beyond it, they dug a ditch and just draining five acres of water, they dug a ditch with excavator all the way down the fence road, and it just dumps the water. They draining five acres of the field into the road.
I don't know what the rules is now, but you couldn't, unless, you could keep a ditch cleaned out, you couldn't dig it no wider, and you couldn't dig, you could dig it some wider, but you couldn't dig it no deeper.
These are not new ditches, these are just, and West Sherfield out there, we got a spot, farmer went up there, and the water runs to the corner, that big corner was holding water. He went to the fence road and just took a backhoe, and he didn't dig from here to that, them brick right there, and it dumps five acres of water in the road right there, and when it comes out, it just eats the road out in a big old circle. And then you put a Volkswagen in it when you get a big rain right in the middle of the road. I mean, I don't, and there's nowhere for me to send that kinda water, I mean, I can't stop.
This goes back to the.
To the road.
Yeah, to the road, yeah, to the road ordinance.
Alright.
So we only, just need to look at that.
We just.
It's an ongoing problem.
Well, everybody, you know, twenty years ago, everybody didn't have excavators like they do now, everybody.
Everybody cleaning up trees, I mean, we got them doing it on highways though now, I mean, the dirt roads was bad enough, we got some highways where it's being done. And you go dumping that kinda water on highways, it rained a big flash flood, five inches of rain, eventually, somebody's gonna get killed running through, and on a dirt road too. That one hole we was talking about on West Sherfield, I went fixed it the other night, and if a small car had been coming through that thirty-five, forty mile.
Knocking front end of that?
It would've just nose dived in that hole, and it's nothing but that one little, they didn't cut it this much, a, a, a bucket width, and didn't cut it twenty-five foot, but it just dumps a big amount of water right in the road, and there's nowhere for it to go, I mean, it's just flooding the road.
Alright, it, it, we got the pictures, it's been noted where it's at and all, so we gonna, if we get the ordinance in place, we, we'll deal with it. Uh, any more question on that? Alright, alright, we got the picture and everything, the, uh, security camera went to land field and to dump.
Yeah, so that goes back to what Andy said, I mean, there, there was people saying that people dumping trash in front of the gates, stuff like that, so we, we have the cameras in place, uh, we just don't have them installed yet, so, so we're gonna put cameras on the front gates, cameras on the bins, we'll, we'll have enough cameras around there, we'll be able to see, you know, who's doing what.
You just ain't got it up running.
That is right, it will be installed this week.
Alright, alright, is there anything else we need to talk about, that's all the new business?
That's it, I just handed y'all those, that, that, uh, documents that y'all could review.
Alright, anything with the department here, do anything we need to go over?
I was thinking this.
Alright, well, that's, if there is nothing else, uh, we need a motion to adjourn.
I'm gonna motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Alright, I'm gonna vote in favor of it all, so we adjourn.